Lease that out and that's to Brad Herman, so. First you gotta hold a brand and he would be willing to rent that.
We directed you to draw up this resolution, right?
Yeah, and so if you remember, we had this land lease with Krauskau.
Krauskau.
And he did not pay the land rent in November, so we sent him notice and the lease terminated because we didn't get paid. Um, this property is rented by, the property around. Our four acres is rented by Brad Herman. There is no driveway to our property. So, we, that's why we reached out to him because it made sense if he was interested in renting our four acres. And he is interested, so we, the rent would be the same amount.
Krauskau didn't pay it.
No.
He's financially bankrupt or something?
Yeah, he's in debt. So anyways, so he's partnered with, with Brad and Brad, Brad's just gonna pick up that ground now, yeah.
So, that's what's before you is the land lease with Brad Herman, the quarry hill that's four acres.
But we're not behind in.
Well, the lease we had was with Krauskau.
But is that behind?
It didn't get paid in November. We got the attorney involved and we gave him notice and we terminated it because we didn't get payment. Um, it would be what, four hundred and forty some, whatever half that is, is what we didn't get, so. What are we gonna get? So I mean, I can certainly have the city attorney pursue it if that's what you want, but.
I, I would, you need a motion?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes.
I'll second it.
All those.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Alright, thanks. Item twelve then, resolution number one, four, five, two, dash, twenty-five. That's a resolution setting the annual salaries and wages for non-union employees of the city of Postville. This, that's also in the packet.
Was this the same rate increases that the union employees got in time, or is what happens?
Yep, and I, um, did put those numbers in your budget, so. I think I gave you a copy of the spreadsheet. What?
You thought it'd just be automatic?
Do you want it to be automatic? That would be great.
Makes sense, right?
I get it.
Second.
I'll second it.
Whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yeah.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. We'll go on to item thirteen then, resolution number one, four, five, one, dash, twenty-five. This is a resolution setting the annual salaries and wages for the swimming pool seasonal employees of the city of Postville.
So these were wages set by the board.
My question is, I'm not sure competitive with surrounding pools.
These were the wages set by the board, so you're signing off on them. So, yeah, I think you are competitive from the research I've done. I'm not sure about Walk On, but, um, I know Manona, we pay more, El Cator, we pay more. I don't think I checked with Walk On this year, but.
They're kind of bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little different.
They're looking for a new pool manager, so. Yeah, you know, not keeping everybody either.
Well, and you have to realize they've got a whole park and rec department that operates. That's not something Postville has that we compete with. Oh, yeah.
And is this be, is this like etched in stone if you, if you can't get enough?
We've already, they've already hired them. They got enough. They're right, yeah, they got them all hired and everything, yeah. Yeah, so they're, that's why they've set their wages because they've done their hiring. Yeah, they're already done with all that.
Need a motion?
I think we have got resolution one, four, five, one, dash, twenty-five.
Second?
I'm gonna abstain from voting because I inspect the pool, so. I'm gonna abstain from voting because I inspect the pool.
But we still need a second.
I'll second.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody's abstaining. Ingstrom?
Yes.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We got that done, so let's go on to item fourteen, resolution number one, four, five, four, dash, twenty-five. And this is a resolution authorizing position of permanent and temporary easement.
So this is easement with Ziegler to bring them water service. Uh, we are asking for a temporary and then of course a permanent, um, for the well transmission line and piping that we are laying. In that project. We met with them last week, Thursday, and they are in agreement to sign. So, you just have to sign on.
I'd make motions to approve resolution one, four, five, four, dash, two, five.
Second? Laura, whenever you're ready, Darcy.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yeah.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Alright, thanks. We'll go on to item fifteen then, uh, accounting software bits.
Um, so, we are looking at changing our software, um, accounting software here at City Hall. Um, we currently run two softwares, um, we always have since I've been here. Uh, we use Banyan software for our utility and then we use G-Works, or Simple City, I guess they call it. For our general ledger payroll, um, and accounts payable. And, Simple City is going away. They will be no more as of the end of the calendar year. They're forcing cities into what they call the cloud. And, um, they, I have heard from other cities that have gone to it or have transitioned to it. That it is not working. Uh, they have not been happy. There's been a lot of issues, a lot of cash. That's, um, a cash reports that aren't reconciling, um, the support hasn't been there. And so I think that what has happened is they took on too much, too fast and can't accommodate. Forcing all these cities onto the software. Um, so, I went out for bid and I would like to change from Simple City to Banyan. I would like to match our utility software so that it all talks to each other. Right now, we reconcile separately. We have to reconcile utility accounts and then we have to enter all that information into our general ledgers. Um, and so when we're audited, it's a lot of work for us. I mean, we have to show that we're reconciling both softwares. And we've watched demos with several different companies and it made sense to us that Banyan. Would be the easiest transition for us and it's probably most similar to what we already have and price-wise, it makes sense. So I guess I'm recommending, I have it in my new, my budget year for the new budget year. That we transition away from our G-Works and go into the Banyan software. With our accounts payable, our general ledger and our, uh, payroll.
And who, who services, who is Banyan?
Yeah, it's, that's the company, the software company. They're actually located out of, uh, Minnesota. They're a Minnesota company. Right now, the Simple City we have, they're actually located out of Nebraska. Um, I don't believe there's any software companies in Iowa. They're, you know, the admins, I think I give it, gave you their huge quote.
You know, Banyans. But if you get ahold of a person.
Yeah, so we pay for, um, a mon, a yearly software support where we call and if we have issues, they go right on. They log into our system and they help you through. Yeah, yeah. We currently have that with G-Works too, but it's just, the customer service just isn't there anymore. You wait a long time if you have tickets to be resolved. Um, our G-Works, we can't even do direct deposits at all. I know our employees want that, but we can't, we can't do that with the software we have. So that'll be something that we'll be doing once we go to the Banyan software, so.
So, is the yearly thing included in the ninety-two?
Yeah, that, so, it'll be less than that. Once, this is getting us the rest of the software. And then it, right now, we pay just a little over three thousand to Banyan just for our utility and that's our software support. So once we're completely on there, we'll still have a yearly support fee, but it won't be the nine thousand. It, yeah, it'll cover everything then.
What makes the other one six times more expensive?
It was a lot of bells and whistles from what we've looked at. It's way, I mean, it was probably for cities that are like a Des Moines. Or your big metropolitan, it would have made sense to us to go to something like that, but not a city the size.
Alright, is there a second? Okay, that's just a regular. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That's carried. Okay, let's go on to the consent agenda then. Anything on there that you guys wanna kick around?
My name is Crystal Duffy and I'm the library director and the community board for the city. Um, so, just a couple of things I wanted to share with you. I don't know if Val, Rinkie, with the Almack County kind of person. Um, send these to you guys or not, if you've already seen them, um. But she sent these to me and then we also had like a meeting about two weeks ago, a tourism meeting for the county. I don't think I made enough copies.
I think I've seen that.
So, as you can see, tourism brings a lot of money into, um, our county. Um, I think a couple of things that are pretty interesting is that the state only increased by five point one percent in twenty twenty-three. But Almack County increased by six point eight percent. So to me, that says that Val's kinda kicking butt. Um, if our state or our county's increasing more than our state is. Um, and then the taxes generated, um, for local tax, three point three, three million. Um, anyway, I just wanted to share that with you guys, uh, to show that we should probably, and I am working on linking into this more. I think a lot of the tourism in Almack County revolves around the river probably, but we do have things and we do offer things that the river towns do not. So, um, yeah, so I just thought that was interesting. And, the other thing I wanted to share, um. Also that Almack County was featured on the Travel Iowa homepage for February. And Travel Iowa website has a lot of visitors. It has a yearly, um, travel magazine that they put out. Um, and then sharing that on Friday, I had the fortune to be able to premiere our Heart and Soul movie. At the O'Nyota, um, Film Festival in Decorah. And it was standing room only. We used every single chair that went into Hotel Wintishik had. Um, they ran out of chairs. We had to keep getting more and then there were no more and there were people standing or people sitting on the floors. Um, and then we had a Q and A afterwards and about eighty percent of the folks who came to the movie stayed for the Q and A. And we had a bunch of people asking questions, um, and we had, and one of you's gonna come up with something, because I've not met him. I believe it was Lyle something. He said, I taught at Postville from nineteen seventy-one until two thousand four or something, right? And your movie made me cry. And then someone else came up to me afterwards and said, if you made Lyle cry, that's something. So, anyway, I just saw you guys get a kick out of that. It was great. It was very cool to be able to share about our community. With people who are nearby for the most part, who can potentially link into our, our tourism and our, you know, Mexican market and our grocery stores and restaurants. So, um, it was a really cool experience and, um, and yeah, and then I also wanted to just like. Friendly reminder that I'm a ten hour a week employee. So when you're looking at my like monthly reports. Rather than thinking about it as a month of work, you should maybe think like, would I be happy with this amount of work from a person who's working full-time for one week? Right? So, I'm not a forty hour a month, or I'm not a forty hour a week employee. Um, I feel like I get a fair amount done, but just reminding you guys I'm not full-time, so, you know, I get done what I can. Um, so, yeah. There's a back too.
Like we've always spoken about the Chamber of Commerce, but it's always kind of being theoretical. Like I kept asking, where is the Chamber?
This just makes my little plan thing?
No, I'm saying this report, oh, it makes this whole community development thing more tangible.
Yeah.
More practical, down-to-earth, and I think you're accomplishing that one.
Tying, tying in with Val too, just because I'm thinking of it, because we met this month and had a meeting. What I've been doing basically since they took over from Heart and Soul in fall of twenty twenty-two. Um, is that she does sort of big picture stuff and so she'll take out an ad for Almack County. Like when she did the Travel Iowa website, we were on the homepage for that, um, for Almack County. She'll email, email me and say, hey, I have one or two spots for something in Postville. Here's the businesses I'm thinking of using. Do you think these are good businesses to use? Good business to, businesses to use, meaning, um, businesses that have regular hours, are open when they say they're gonna be open. We're gonna lure people here, we have to be able to make sure they're gonna be able to go somewhere they can get in, right? So, she'll check with me about, is this a good business to use and then ask me to like write up a little description or edit the one she already has. Or, um, she'll send me things. Right now, have you guys seen those visitor maps for the Driftless area? It's basically Almack and Wintishik County. They work on them together. I use one as a tourist. It's got all the like Driftless scenic byways and all the different towns on it. She sent me that and had me edit for Postville. You know, there were a couple of businesses that had gone out of business that we had to take off. We had a couple of new things to put on. So, we're constantly working back and forth with me doing maybe more detail, lower level things and her doing the bigger picture. Um, and so, yeah, so I think that works pretty well because it saves us both work, right? Like I don't have to reinvent the wheel and she doesn't have to know all the tiny details about Postville, which, you know, she does know a lot of people anyway, but. So, yeah, that's what I got. Any questions?
Thanks. Okay, anything else? The other consent agenda?
That we use seventy percent of our tree budget or something. There was tree talk, community beautification tree talk, and we've spent seventy.
No, that's, that's removal and planting. So we did a lot of removal here over the winter and fall and.
Well, I have a lot of people asking me when we're gonna replant trees, so. Does that tree, then we used to get trees from?
We used, yeah, we had, we wrote grants for them.
Okay.
So, yeah, those are usually in the spring.
Normally.
Yeah.
Last, we were getting the trees back.
There was something just come across my desk about. Something through DNR had trees.
Then you get them for free, but you have to drive to Ames to get them. It's not Ames?
These were gonna be a little more local.
Normally the, the nurseries now that you deal with are the, coming out of Bosque though.
These were in Iowa even. Yeah, I should try to find that email again, but I don't know if they're gonna be.
They're just a. So, yeah, they're just, uh, seedlings that we.
We'd want.
You want the three foot, four footer trees, yeah.
But, um, but there was also somewhere where that was an option, but it wasn't as close by.
Right.
Like say Mason City or something.
Yeah, it used to be Ames, they kinda cut back on the trees.
But then it was a very slim picking.
Cascade is the other one.
Species.
That they would use Cascade Nursery out of.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion that we accept the consent agenda then?
Second.
Larry? Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. We go on to seventeen and resolution for money to pay the bills, please. Whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody? Ingstrom?
Yes.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Item eighteen then is public comment, yeah? Everybody's happy?
I just, I went to last. Um, Tuesday, Wednesday, I went, it was the, um, uh, meeting, I guess, or a presentation on the human trafficking. That was up at the Wellness Center. It's really eye-opening. Um, I had a misconception in my brain of what. What human trafficking consisted of and I'm sure, you know, a lot of the people that were there did too. Um, there was, uh, like a forty-five, fifty-minute video we watched initially of. She, this lady presented Iowa, not US, but just Iowa, four, four or five victims. And then one also that was a predator, um, in the interviewing. And it was anywhere from very young to teenage to a little bit older, like college-age women. And then the predator was a, um, sex addict that was, um, into watching pornography. And was trying to find out ways to buy a human online. And his wife bought him and that's how he ended up getting help. But, um, then she also had, uh, a victim that was. Had gotten help and was, you know, was there to speak as well. Um, but it was, it was, I mean, you know, the one was, she had been sold. Like fifty, sixty times an evening by her predator. And, but she was just located, the guy found her at, at college in the weight room. And convinced her and then took her and she was microchipped three different ways. And it, it was, it was just really, and, and she was not your, my impression was gonna be some very attractive young little. Darling that, you know, would be cute. This one gal was far from the, the image. She was, she was a heavyset, not, you know, not that attractive young, young gal overweight. And, and she was the one that was abused the worst. Um, so, and it was a really good. Two, over two hours, uh, presentation. So, if you ever get a chance to go watch it or listen to this gal speak. It's well worth it, so, um, it was an eye-opener.
Yeah. Alright, thanks.
It's sick.
Yeah, I mean, you just wouldn't think things like that actually happen, but they do, yeah. Okay, well, we got, uh, Mayor's Report. I got a few things to talk about, so, uh. What day did we, we met with, uh, Cory Snitker, uh, and then you two folks also, Becky and Mary. So, the, the reason for that meeting was, um, uh, I was. Uh, well, it was the fire chief that I was talking to and he said, you need to take a look at how our. Um, sirens in this town are, are wired together. I, I know Larry, you saw that, you looked at that wall. Yes, it's very antiquated, very, very old. So then, well, then we got to talk to Cory, who's the emergency manager. Management, manager, you know, and, and so he came down and, uh, there is a grant we can go after. And, uh, you know, to pay for, hopefully all of them. But right now, I believe we got four, is there four sirens? And, and, uh, we can honestly do kind of a study that, uh, maybe we don't need four. Because the new sirens today are, are, uh, believe it or not, they're louder or something. You know, so, I mean, we could, we could strategically place those, um, where everybody would hear them. You know, in town. And honestly, I know that there's times when you hear them, but the wind's gotta be right. You know, and, uh, and we were taking a look at if, you know, if you go, um, out, uh, on the northeast side. Past Norplex and out there, I mean, we don't have any, any siren there at all. Um, so that's, and if you guys, if you think of something about that meeting that you wanna talk about, you know, you sure can. Uh, but, um, and I believe Cory was coming tomorrow.
All afternoon.
One of the things that I got from that meeting, I didn't know it was meant for just people if you're outside. Cause I was, that I can never hear the sirens in my house and found out it's for people outside, so they'll take cover if it's a wind, wind thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be a constant.
Yeah.
Well, and there's three things that it goes off for. It's not just tornado, straight line winds and then hail. I didn't know that, yeah. That's, that was an interesting thing.
So, we're gonna, you know, we'll proceed with, with, uh, uh. That he'll be here. So that's just something to, uh, that we're, we're kinda going through. And then we, then we met, uh, we mentioned that earlier with Ziegler. So, um, and I don't know if you folks are about as excited about this project as I am. Because honestly, you drive, you go out north now, you're starting to see something happen. You know, and, and this is truly a big deal for this town. Um, and, yeah, it's gonna, you know, we're, we're, it's gonna cost us some money to get the things located where they need to be located. But you gotta take a look at what they spent to be here. Um, and they never said anything about anything else, but they wanted to be a part of this town, you know, so. Yeah, no, they, they just, this is it, you know, and, and so I, I think this is, uh, uh, a great thing for us. And, uh, hopefully, uh, I know the original intent was to hire more folks and maybe we can, you know, uh, have some more folks. That are, uh, not only working here but living here. Uh, the, the third thing I wanna touch on, and I, I think we had kinda started on this last fall. Um, you know, with the property that the city owns south here. Uh, we had kinda, I, I talked to Ben Garrett this morning and, you know, he's the man that we had got and we started with him. Well, um, I, uh, so I touched base with, with him this morning. It's been a while since we talked. Well, the last time we had talked, he was recommending that we start the process by, uh, with. Uh, community member involvement to see what, what maybe the community wants, you know. I mean, uh, uh, what kind of a house, what kind of housing are you looking at? You know, all of those things that, uh. And I, I think that, uh, but what I'm talking about is, is, is the point that it's gonna start to cost us a little money. You know, because this, this fella that comes in and does this, it, I, I forget, Darcy, what his, it, it's, it's a, a fee that he charges, you know. But, uh, uh, but my wish, you know, if I've got a wish on this at all, it is like, we don't set on it. We act on it. And, uh, so, you, we all know that the further we progress with this is where the money is gonna cost. It's gonna keep costing us money. But we can't, I don't think we just sit there and think about it because honestly, that doesn't get anywhere. Uh, because there, there's folks that I'm, I'm pretty sure that are thinking about housing and right now, you know, all we got is a field. So, we've got a lot of things to go through.
One of the things I liked about the guys that came here was that you get a mixed thing, not just all cookie butter houses.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And some duplexes and maybe a assisted living.
Yeah.
Some kind of a facility.
I mean, the, I mean, right now, I mean, the sky's the limit, but what we, but we need to have the folks, I, I think, to get together and get, get. The opinions of, of folks, you know, so. So, I, I think that, I think we need to progress and, and like I said, this first one, I, I forget what the fee was on that, but it's not much. You know, and get something going there. Okay, there. And Mary, thanks for sitting in for me for a couple of meetings.
Should be great.
Okay, I'm done.
Do you have an idea of time to have this initial?
Well, I get a, I get, I talk.
The weather's warming up now.
You bet.
Getting out and circulating.
Yes, yes, yep, yep. So I, I talked with Ben again and he could, he could get this guy lined up and, and.
Gotta wait for that guy to get lined up and come to be at that meeting, first meeting.
Yes, yes. He's kinda the guy that does the meeting, you know, so.
Okay.
And that was Ben's recommendation, so. And, you know, this year, uh, that field that we have is gonna be seeded down. There won't be any more crops in there, so. Yeah. There, I'm done. Anybody else?
I have a couple of comments or I guess a question. One, one is a comment. Um, you know, we're talking about how much the food was costing at the school and everything. I know they're not using schwants anymore, but um, I was told that the, the manager was telling the guards they could eat what they want, but that's what they were doing, so that.
That's making some sense to me then with the numbers I saw. It's making sense to me with the numbers I saw then.
Yeah.
But, yeah, no, it's no different than any other city employee. We aren't eating on the taxpayers' dime.
You're not gonna get.
Yeah, you don't, you don't eat to your concessions.
Yeah, and then I thought.
Those kids are bottomless bits.
Yeah.
What?
And those kids are bottomless.
Oh, I know. And then um, the parking on the lawns deal, that one house, um, killed it, is it? Is, now, have they been notified?
And what am I supposed to tell them?
Yeah, no.
I don't know. I thought you were gonna have.
Well, it's almost what, April?
It's only if it's um, they're only gonna get notified if it's only on Boulevard.
City Boulevard.
If they're on their own property, it's on them. But it's where they start making the, their own little road going across Boulevard.
Or being parked on the Boulevard, then we can enforce code, but that was a conversation we had about, should we change the code about parking like that? But we didn't do it.
You gotta have a place to park.
They, they can ask, I don't know, we hardly ever deny a curb cut. They can get a curb cut.
Well, they have one there. There is one there.
No, I think about different problems.
Okay.
And then um, can we talk about what hap, what happened this Friday night or?
Just another search warrant.
Did you get anybody?
Hmm, found some stuff.
Okay. And Larry, what happened to you? Did you get bit by a cow?
No.
Did you get it?
It's mine, just some scratches or. Coming brush, yeah.
Okay, I just thought maybe it.
We just bleed, yeah.
I don't worry about bleeding. I worry about is you can't bleed, then you gotta fix right, you're out.
You can't stop either.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Thanks, thanks, everybody for coming.